I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell. Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Chairman Bowman. Here. Is there any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda? Seeing none, again an approval.
Motion. Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, minutes previous meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the January 21st Commission meeting and the February 4th Standing Committee meeting be approved and filed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, Proclamations. Item A, Janet Rose.
This time I'd like to move to approve the proclamation recognizing Janet Rose for forty-one years of service.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item seven, Consent Agenda, items A through C.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to support my, I would move to approve items seven A through seven C on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion on any of those items. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Reports of standing and special committees, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Tamian.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Nothing this evening.
Commissioner Greatop.
I'd just like to report that the dive boat, the custom-built aluminum dive boat that we approved a number of years ago, or a number of months ago for grant application, actually has been started, they've actually laid the keel to it, they're beginning to put the ribs together, and they expect it to be in service later this summer sometime, so it is in the works, gentlemen.
Okay.
There nothing.
Do.
No, sir.
Mr. Chair, I forgot to mention that tomorrow from ten AM to eleven thirty AM, the Area Agency on Aging, One B, will be holding a public hearing at the Council on Aging offices, and this is in preparation for their three-year plan for federal financing of our services to the elderly, and just wanted everybody to know if you're interested, please consider to attend.
Okay. I'm just gonna touch base, we had a meeting last night, it was kind of a meet-and-greet, a couple of you, Bill, Dan, you were there, we had the new owner of the Saint Clair Inn, it was hosted down at The Voyager, some of you may have read the article in the paper, but had a question-answer segment, I give Jeff Kotowski, the owner, a lot of credit, he answered all the questions people asked, very poignant, in-depth questions, we know there's been a lot of history with the Saint Clair Inn, there's been some legal issues, so on and so forth, and he did a great job of fielding all the questions. Today, we had a working session this morning, Jeff is a real estate developer from California, and, you know, what we did is we put a meeting together today, Dan Casey was part of it, I know Bill, you were there, we had a couple others, Dave Struck, Lindsay from the county's end, we had the MEDC, we had historical folks, community foundations, city representation and stuff, and spent about three hours plus actually talking through the project, you know, and just all the different pieces, and there was none of this, I gotta get back with you, I can't answer that question, and that stuff, so we had the right folks in the room, because that, that project is huge for the city of Saint Clair, you know, it's a ten million dollar-plus investment. I attended lunch with them today, Dan actually went with us, we had five of us, and he, you know, point-blank told us, he does a lot of developments, a lot of places, he has never had that kind of support in any community that he's been in, he was just thoroughly impressed with, with that, and I've actually got a meeting with him tonight at eight o'clock with an architect and some other individuals in town, just to really work with him, but I think he's gonna, I think he's gonna do good, you know, I feel much better about, you know, the project moving forward after these series of meetings, I just wanna thank the EDA for their participation, obviously been involved in it, the county, we've done a lot of work, and just, we really, we really shined today in that, so, that was my little schmear. Going to move on, citizens wishing to address a board, any citizens wishing to address a board at this time? Item tense, there's some unfinished business, I was not at the last meeting when this came up, I'm gonna refer this over to Commissioner Greatop, 'cause he chaired that particular meeting.
Yeah, we, we had on the consent agenda notice of proposed railroad communication structure, and there were a couple of questions that some of the commissioners had about the communications and stuff, and I called Commissioner Rushing, who used to work for the railroad, and asked him if he would take a look at it, just to get, fill us in if there was anything that we needed to know about.
I'm not aware of anything, it's just that it's gonna be on their property, a thirty, thirty-foot structure on their own property, and it's required by federal buildings, I believe it has anything to do with the county at all.
Zip.
Do you have railroad experience, Dave? I said, do you have railroad experience?
A little bit, fifteen years' work.
There may have been a question or two last time, anybody that has any questions today on that particular piece?
Okay, I think we're good with the unfinished business.
We need to approve that as part of the consent agenda.
I think what we do is-
I think you tabled it.
Yeah, we just have to take it off the table and-
You wanna make the motion then?
I would so do.
Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Item eleven, A, Proposed Revisions to the Expense Reimbursement Policy.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the revisions to the expense reimbursement policy as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item B, the EDA presentation for the 2016 goals, I know a handful of you got an opportunity to attend, attend the EDA semi-annual lunch, which was, or semi-annual dinner, which was just this past Tuesday, so I'm sure some of the stuff, you know, we're gonna be seeing again, so, Dan?
Thank you. So, I'm here tonight to present to you the EDA's goals and objectives that were approved in February of last year, we went through a lengthy process to establish a five-year strategic plan that involved participation from our membership, our Board of Directors, and some stakeholders in the community, from that, we established a five-year strategic plan, it goes from 2015 through 2019, I was directed by the Board to go out to all of our public sector members and present the plan to them, and request that your Boards pass a resolution in support of those goals and objectives, so that's what I'm here to do tonight, so first I wanna introduce you to our team, we have two new members of the team since probably last we met, the first is Greg Capote, who's our new Director of Attraction, who took over for David Haynes, Greg came to us from Wayne County, where he worked in economic development, and also he had his own consulting business, secondly Bruce Seymour, you already know him, Tina Frazier's our Marketing Director, you already know her as well, and then lastly is Kelsey Filippo, who is the Administrative Assistant and Membership Coordinator for the EDA.
Dan?
That's our current team.
Was Mr. Capote a city manager at some point?
Uh, he, yes, he, he had a six-month contract with Lincoln Park.
Okay, thank you.
Me, of course, we have a Board of Directors that consists of about thirty-six individuals, this isn't the best picture of our Board, you notice, for example, we only have one woman in the picture, but we also had half of our Board missing, so-
Yeah, I look old in there, too.
We need a better picture, and we have more women on the Board, trust me, and someone pointed out we could use some diversity, too, so we're aware of all of those things. So, you already know we're a nonprofit organization who's been doing business in this county for over sixty-five years, formed in nineteen fifty-two, don't do the math. Here's the meat of tonight's presentation, these are the five key goals that were established in our strategic plan, some of them you'll recognize, and some of them are new, the first is jobs and investment, this is not new, this is something that we have been focused on for many, many years, it generally, this goal relates to three core activities of the Economic Development Alliance, the first is attracting new industry to move into the county, the second is to assist existing businesses in the county to grow, expand, and also help them solve problems, and third is to help establish new business entities in the county, and then help them to grow as well, so that's our first goal, jobs and investment, the second goal, community vitality, our organization has been involved in assisting communities in a wide variety of ways over the years, everything from getting grants to finding companies to fill in downtown vacant spaces, however, this has not always been a stated goal of the EDA in its strategic plan, we have formalized that, and in fact, in 2015, we had more than fourteen community development projects that we were involved with, and we have nearly the same number that we're working on right now, so this has been an area that's really picked up as the economy has improved in the state and locally. The third goal is competitive talent, this again is something that's new for the first time in our strategic plan, however, it is something that we have worked on in the past. The EDA is obviously not the provider of workforce development services, we don't educate young people, we don't do any of that work, but what we do do is we support organizations that do that work by partnering with them, raising money and helping them to establish curriculum, and we're doing more and more of that, in fact, this month we're launching a manufacturing one-on-one training program for people who are currently unemployed, so that's one example of a program that, you know, a few years ago, we probably wouldn't have established. The fourth goal is, we call it Blue Water Assets, but basically that represents the marketing effort of the organization, that marketing effort involves marketing the county, communities in the county, our own organization, and programs and services that are being offered to attract companies, assist companies, and help people find jobs, so, goal number four is obviously very important, because there's not a lot of, there's not enough effort taking place in our county to promote ourselves in the metro Detroit region and nationally, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about this in a minute. Finally, program sustainability, we don't exist as an organization to help communities and companies and individuals if we don't have the resources to do that, so it's important for us that we are constantly doing fundraising to try to increase our revenue so that we can do more and more, but also, this represents the work that we do as an organization, our administrative work, our Board activity, and our membership events. Okay, so there were four key tenants in the strategic plan that represent the work that we do, the first is gardening, which is basically a philosophy of assisting existing businesses to grow, and in fact, about eighty percent of all of the projects that we work on typically are existing companies in the county that are trying to expand, so it's not necessarily recruiting new companies to come here, it's helping existing companies on a daily basis. The second tenant is called partnerships, or collaboration is another way that we put it, and basically, this is how we function as an organization, virtually every project that we're involved with, we have collaborative partners who are at the table, and it depends on what the project is, and it can be, as Jeff said earlier today, talking about the Saint Clair Inn, we had probably twenty people in the room representing probably seven or eight different organizations, so that's a good example of that. The third, market dynamism, basically means that we're promoting companies to buy locally, if at all possible, first, and also supporting companies to export their goods outside of the county and outside of the country, the reason why we focus on exporting is because the way that you generate wealth in a community is by bringing in more revenue or money than leaves your county or your, your community, so the more our companies are selling externally, the wealthier they get, and the wealthier the people that work for those companies, and the spin-off effect in the local economy, the better all of that is, so that's one of the reasons why that's an important tenet, and the last one is really a philosophy of economic development, which is that we are promoting private sector investment that's supported by the public sector, not the other way around, so we want the private sector to come to the table with their ideas, their resources, and then we'll find ways for government to support their needs if it makes sense.
Some examples of that, Dan?
Uh, some, some examples of that, well, the Saint Clair Inn is a good example, the Marine City Hotel Project is a good example, where we have both nonprofit organizations providing grant money to assist in certain aspects of a project, we have local communities providing incentives to overcome cost gaps that might prevent a project from happening, we have the state of Michigan doing the same thing, and ultimately, we have a private sector investor who's putting in the vast majority of the money to make a project happen.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, give the EDA credit, I sit in a lot of meetings with Dan, if I'm not in a meeting with him once a week, I'm twice a week, and the whole public-private partnership, governments, you know, just, it really speaks volumes of, of everybody essentially working together, and this meeting today, just a great example of that, so, little kudos.
Thank you. I already covered this, so I'll skip it. This slide just represents some examples of how we do our work, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but if you have any questions on any of these goals, or how we go about doing our work, I'll certainly happy to answer them, but I do wanna mention one, I think that's pretty important, or two things, actually, the first is, one of the roles that we play, I think, that's really important in the county, is we get requests for proposals from the state of Michigan for potential projects that may occur, so these would be companies that are looking to do projects somewhere in the US, sometimes it's, there's an international competition, and sometimes a company goes directly to the state with their request, sometimes it comes from, most of the time it comes from a site consultant or a real estate group, so they'll submit a site requirement to the state, the state then distributes all of those RFPs statewide, no matter where the focus is, let's say someone wants to be in southeast Michigan, they'll distribute it statewide anyway, and so they send it out to all of the regional economic development groups like us, and it's our job to respond to those requests and to submit sites and information that they need, if we have a site, whether it's a building or land, work for the project, so that's an important role that we play, because real estate brokers don't have the opportunity to do this, they don't know about these projects, the development community typically doesn't know about these projects either, so it's pretty much just the economic development community that does, and it's our job to, to respond, so an example of a success that occurred in, in our community was when we landed Iceman Automotive, that's how that project came to us, to an RFP. Secondly, I just wanna touch on economic development for a moment, because I talked about having collaborative partners, I'm sorry, economic gardening, and one of our collaborative partners is the Small Business Development Center, and they provide training to small businesses and entrepreneurs on how to start a business, how to develop a marketing plan, how to finance your business, venture, and so forth, we coordinate that work for them, we schedule appointments that they have in our suite with those companies, and they do one-on-one consultations with them, and we also schedule their training program, so we work pretty closely with our SBDC counselor, and I think it's been a pretty effective program for us, so those are just some of the tools, there's a lot I could talk about, but I'm gonna skip that for now unless you want me to provide more detail. Here's some example of, examples of collaboration projects, we formed the Eastern Michigan Manufacturing Association, which is a division of the EDA, and the purpose of this is, is manufacturers needed more focus to help themselves some of the issues that they have in common, and we needed a communication forum, in particular for private sector, for the school districts, in particular for Saint Clair Community College and Baker College, so this is a forum where they get together on a quarterly basis, they do projects, and we bring in partners who need to be at the table to help them with these things, so this is one example, the EDA administers Emma and does all of the work for that. Blue Meets Green is the countywide strategic plan, the EDA is administering that, but there's a lot of other people that are involved in that effort, Techport was something that the EDA created, we spun it off as a separate 501(c)(3) organization with its own Board, but we continue to administer its work and do its marketing, and then lastly, Canadian Appreciation Weekend, this year will be the fourth year, I believe, that we've had this, it's in May, and it originally began as an EDA idea, but we brought in a lot of chambers, Visitors Bureau, a lot of other organizations to help us organize it and to do the work to promote it and to get retailers to buy into it, so that's another example of a project where we used, where we've collaborated. Okay, here's the good part, this is the results that were announced on Tuesday night from the economic development work that's occurred in the county over the year 2015, the total investment that was generated in the county was about almost four hundred and eighteen million dollars, that's a pretty significant increase over the previous year, when it was around a hundred and twenty million, so, a good year, what does this mean? It means new tax revenue for all of the taxing jurisdictions, so that's a good thing, it also means health, and it means that the economy is, is moving along at a pretty rapid pace in our county, and it's leading to a lot of opportunities, we also generated about five hundred and twenty-five new jobs from all of the various projects that were announced, one of the things I wanted to mention is, 2015 was a year in which we finally saw retail begin to come back, retail and commercial development begin to come back in our county, I think that's really important, it's really what I call the third leg of the economic cycle, and the fourth leg is residential development, and we're continuing to see more investment and more opportunities surface around retail and commercial development this year, so that's a, really, that's a good indicator for all of us, and the large, single largest project that we had in the year was the Clair Inn Hospital announcement with their replacement wing that they're building and the oncology center that they're building, the second largest was in Ira Township, and it was the Consumers Energy Gas Distribution Facility that's currently under construction, and that was a big, big project as well. So, we do a lot of marketing, as I mentioned earlier, we do it in print, radio, probably the most affordable way for us to promote the county is through the internet, where we take out internet ads, banner ads, and things like that, they're a lot lower cost, and we're able to track who clicks on those banners, and it can take them directly to our website, so we can tell which page they landed on, on our website, and where they went when they were there, so that's a really good way, whereas in print, you have no idea who's actually seen your ad or how they're responding to it, so we do a lot of internet advertising, we go to trade shows, and we travel around the country, meeting with site consultants, investment groups, developers, and other people in real estate as well. We have about twenty-five hundred followers on our social media pages, our website, this just basically represents that our website is friendly on tablets, so you can be on a mobile device and be able to access our website and all the information that's there, talked about that, and that's it, so with that, I'll take any questions that you might have, if you have any.
Commissioners? Okay. Dan, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Uh, we're gonna move on, item C, the commercial-
Do we need a motion on that last one, Joe?
Uh, it was just a presentation.
There was a resolution.
Oh, is there? Okay, um, for what, for the accepting there?
If anyone, I, I would, I would move that we approve the resolution supporting the goals and objectives of the Economic Development Alliance of Saint Clair County.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
We need a roll call and resolution?
Should.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item C, the Commercial Card Services Agreement, the P Card.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the Commercial Card Service Agreement with Fifth Third Bank.
Support.
Discussion.
Just, just out of curiosity, the way this works, any retailer that accepts the P Card, they, they get, they pay five percent, and then we, we get one percent of that, so we'll make about ten thousand a year on this.
Okay, anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item D, the Michigan State Cooperative Extension, the Annual Work Plan Agreement for 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve the 2016 Michigan State Cooperative Extension Annual Work Plan Agreement in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item E, 2016 Marine Safety Grant Application.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve fiscal year 2016 Marine Safety Program Grant Application in the amount of three hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item F, the Road Commission Milage Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to adopt Resolution sixteen dash zero three, placing the milage for the road improvement on the ballot.
Support.
Discussion, we heard from the Road Commission last week, roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item G, the Columbus Park Development Planning.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the contract with Pamblow PMB for professional landscaping architectural services for the Columbus County Park in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item H, the Saint Clair County Parks and Recreation Milage Renewal.
This time I'd like to move to adopt Resolution sixteen dash zero four, placing the proposed renewal for park and recreation milage on the ballot.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes. Item I, the Survey and Remonumentation Grant Completion Report.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the 2015 Survey and Remonumentation Completion Report in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item J, the Equalization Manning Table Reorder.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the revisions to the equalization manning table, adding a deputy director and senior appraiser position. Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item twelve, the Administrator's Report.
In March, we planned to come to the Board with the final report on the construction expenses and budget for the convention center, just this week, we paid our last invoice, so Carrie, as well as Jenny, will be working on that final financial report, that will be included next month. A reminder of the State of the County address on the eighteenth of March at eleven o'clock at Alexander's, it's being put on by the Blue Water Chamber of Commerce, so if you are interested in attending, please make sure you get in touch with our office. Last, pardon me, two nights ago, we attended, a number of us attended the EDA's annual meeting and dinner, semi-annual meeting and dinner, and it was a little unusual this year in that we had a candidate forum, all of those candidates that have been declared to run for the Congressional District Ten, which is Congresswoman Candace Miller's position, were given an opportunity to present to the EDA membership, as well as the public that was there, very, the EDA did a great job structuring that forum, gave all of the candidates plenty of time to provide some opening remarks, a little bit of information about who they are and what they stand for, and then there was, there was a question-and-answer period, and then just a couple of quick moments to wrap up for closing comments, all the responses that I've received was very positive, I think everyone, even though- I think everyone, even though it was a relatively short forum, I think we learned an awful lot about those three candidates. I'm sure there will be plenty of opportunities for the public, as well as the board members, to meet and hear those candidates in the next couple of months leading up to the election. So thank you for the EDA, for helping to put that program together. You know, Commissioner Bone was there, is there anything you...
No, it was civil. No one was screaming at each other, calling each other stupid, any of this. That wasn't very fun.
Isn't that like the presidential debates?
I got to ask, I got to answer, ask all the questions, and I was like, God, this is so boring. None of you guys heard each other's throat. No, we didn't. It was a very, it was more of a meet and greet kind of type. We, you know, invited everybody, all parties, and it wasn't, it was, definitely wasn't a set 'em up deal or anything. It was very, it was good. Nice job.
Our legislative lunch is scheduled for the 22nd of February, so if you could ensure that you've got that on your calendar. If you would like to bring any specific topics up, please let Chris Morris in our office know. She has been keeping track of a number of things over the last couple of months. There's been a number of issues that some of you had mentioned during meetings, and we'll ensure that they get on the agenda. We'll also send a notice out to the department heads and other elected officials. If there are issues they would like to bring up, we will add those to the agenda as well. We'd like to get those agendas and the list of topics out to our legislators about a week before the meeting. That way, their staff can prepare, do any research they need to do. So if you've got some thoughts, please share them with us by Monday or Tuesday of next Today, last, last month, we reported a little bit on some changes that are being made to the indigent defense system within the state of Michigan as the result of a lawsuit and some decisions that are being made by the state court administrator's office and also the state Supreme Court. Today, there was a meeting with the consultant that has been assigned to St. Clair County to assist us in putting together our plan for compliance with the newest standards that will be coming out. Those standards, we don't expect, will be approved by the, by the state courts until sometime in, in May, but we've already begun a meeting. It's my understanding the consultant was actually extremely impressed with our court system, the processes we have in place to deal with indigent defense, and felt that we were way ahead of the curve on, on how we deal with indigent defense and ensure that they've got proper defense, appropriate defense, to protect their rights. But there will be additional changes, additional meetings coming down the road. Chief Judge Kelly was at that meeting. Some very interesting questions were asked, and we'll certainly report to you as we learn more about our efforts to ensure that we are complying. The audit will kick off in early April. Kerry advises me that her staff has already been preparing, and they are ready to go, even though we've, they won't be here for a while. We do expect them to be on site, but as, as we have seen in the last couple of years, there's an awful lot of information they can get to electronically, so the amount of time they actually spend within the county offices is much shorter than it has been in the past. Our workers' comp bid, we're ready to send that out in March. We're in the process of conducting our final review, and once we get that final document developed internally, we'll send it to Corporation Council for their review as well. Our current workers' comp program, our contract expires 31st of August. We feel we've got plenty of time to receive those proposals, review them, do some background checks, make sure that we've got a qualified organization, and then plan for the transition if that is the way we end up having to go. Next Friday at 6:00 p.m. at McMoran is the Blue Woman of, Blue Water Woman of the Year Ceremony, and we do have a county employee from the Health Department, Sherry Faust, who was appointed as the Blue Water Woman of the Year for...
Government?
Government, government services. So I know a number of you have met Ms. Faust, when she's been here. I think she was here just in the last couple of months to give you a report on the Bell River watershed project. We certainly want to congratulate her and support her, so if you are available to attend that next week, you can order tickets online for that.
We do have the former recipient of the Blue Water Woman of the Year in attendance this evening.
Yes, we do. Very happy.
She said that you wrote better than everybody else, that's why she won it.
And, and the final item I want to bring up is Chairperson Bone and I attended the American Business Women's Association National Board of Directors Conference that was held up at the convention center just two weeks ago. They had some, an opening reception one evening. We were invited to attend just to welcome them to the community, some, just some thoughts on how happy we were that they came here to look at our facility. It just so happens that the national president of the organization works for the Blue Water Chamber of Commerce, so she was able to swing the Board of Directors Conference here, and it is her intention of getting the entire organization's convention at our facility in the next couple of years. So it was a good group, a lot of rave reviews for not just the facility, but for the community as well.
Cute story, Candace Miller was up there spending the night. She had her daughter and son-in-law and the kids, and they were running around in the big, the kids were running around in the big room there, and I'm looking, and she come, Candace, what are you doing here? She's all, you know, not in her normal stuff, all grubbed out, and I said, come on, I need you to talk to these gals quick. So she would have made a little cameo and stuff. Yeah, it was pretty cool. It was real cool.
I think they were very surprised to see local government leaders, and then when Commissioner Bone brought in Congresswoman Miller, I think that really floored them. So it was just a, a nice way to welcome them to our community. I, I would say they were pretty, many of them that traveled from the south and the southwest were pretty disappointed that we didn't have any snow up here at that time, but, but it was very beautiful weather, so, that's it.
Questions for Bill and all?
Motion, receiving file administrator's report?
So moved?
Second?
Home favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business. One thing I wanted to touch on, kind of parlaying of the convention center. Give James Fried a lot of credit. He brought the city managers convention to Port here in the last week. It was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and I know, Carl, you know, a lot of your old former guys there, and you were down there, and Bill Kaufman and myself, I met with some of the guys on Wednesday and Thursday. You know, some of the things you, you, we've, we've often talked about was the spin-off effect of the convention center on some of the other businesses, right? So we go down, and we met a group at Thumb Coast Brewery that night. You know, a lot of the vendors, they have their outside parties where they rent these places out. You know, the, they, all the, all the restaurants, bars, they were, they were packed down there. One of the vendors, I just personally got to see the guy's bar tab, it's $3,800, right? And that just shows you, that's one party that they had, that they do when they come to these towns. And if you're a bar and restaurant in February on a Wednesday, and, you know, they're, they're pushing that kind of business in the local businesses, let's face it, that just, you know, it's tough to make money that time of year and a lot of that stuff. So that is just, that was kind of like one of those, okay, I knew, you know, the ancillary piece, but being able to see it and witness it just at one, you know, at one particular place and everything else. On a flip note, too, is James, I thought, did a great job, Blue Water Transit, fantastic job moving everybody. Carl, you heard a tremendous amount of positive feedback from a lot of the guys. I know you were with them and stuff, so just that whole opportunity for us to show this area off, and it was, it was good. Hopefully, lots more to come. So that's my little miscellaneous business.
Yep. Yes. There was a, James Fried did a nice job in the paper today, too. If you happened to see there, he wrote an article, how proud he was of Port here on, in the area, and everybody that was involved in that particular thing, so he did spread the word out a little bit more.
Yeah. So, Howard?
One of the aspects of the convention center that I think a lot of constituents miss is, you know, the investment we, as a county, are making in it to, to support and keep it going. But they don't understand thoroughly the economic impact of that convention center on the community as a whole. We were told when, when we ended building it, that it could have somewhere between a $15 and a $20 million impact on businesses in the community. And your example, just one bar tab of $3,800, that's huge for the owner of that restaurant or that tavern, you know? And that's the sort of economic impact that they were talking about.
That is it on the miscellaneous, motion, receive and file?
Mr. Chairman, I had moved to receive and file packets that were sent to the commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information present.
Support?
Home favor?
Aye.
We are going to go into closed session, and then we are going to adjourn after that. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support?
Home favor?
Aye.
Let's go.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.